All right, we'll call this meeting to order at six o'clock. Do we have any roll call on establishment and form, please?
Mike Wanger?
Here.
Cindy Byte?
Here.
Gary Demaschek?
Here.
James Kirkman?
Here.
Mary Reschall?
Here.
All right, I have proof of posting. Let's please stand for a hug and cheers.
I thought that it finished to the flag of the United States of America and to the repeller for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the agenda. So move.
Second.
Any questions? And Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Uh, Gary?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I will guess as well. On to two point one, approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from January 27th of 2020.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any changes?
Nothing good.
Mary Not, Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary? Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I will guess as well. On to two point two, approval of the payroll accruals slash dispersments.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll accruals and dispersments as second.
All right, does anybody have any questions about any of them?
There are a lot of them.
There are, yeah.
Man, on a monthly basis.
We appreciate all of your work.
No kidding.
All right, hearing no other discussion. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary? Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I will guess as well. Okay, so now we're on to public input. You ready?
No.
Moving on to board president, just wanted to say thank you guys all for coming once again. Appreciate your time and dedication. We also do have some representatives from our surrounding areas. We invited the village representatives as well as the township representatives. So we appreciate you guys coming. This is very important to us, so thank you for your time as well. All right, moving on to four point two, district administration, graders slash administrators.
Yeah, so just kind of as we talked about, they asked the admin team to submit a written report, just kind of the summary of things that are going on in the board notes, but then kind of for now, as we're trying this new format on precise, we're not specifically require anyone to give a verbal report unless it was something that was directly connected to an agenda item or unless you had a clarifying question or something that we were curious about. So I guess at this time I would just ask the board if you had any questions for the administrators and any of their reports.
Just a couple. Cheryl, forecast five, what is that?
It's a data collection and analytics. So my portion of it is obviously the financial portion to try to compare with our comparables, our conference, that type of thing. There is a lot of student data as well. I haven't gotten into that part of it, but I'm sure that Jordan at some point will get into that part too.
No, I'm better forecasted.
Yeah, right, you're right. So another tool.
Yep. Yeah, just with the discussion that we've had about the possibility of doing a market adjustment for our staff members, we needed a valuable tool or a tool where we could look at comps and actually compare them rather than kind of trying to gather all the information ourselves. This is a repository of all the informations together. Any other questions?
So, child fair or child fine fair coming up again? That's always a, yeah.
The census survey was really interesting, the open and out.
Yes, I just wanted to see if you had any questions on that. I hope you had a chance to look at it.
I like probably split it out, it was really interesting. But I wasn't really surprised by anything, kind of went along with what I was thinking, but the where they're going was all interesting, that they're not going to Madison.
Yeah, no, so I just tried to revise that executive summary so you could kind of have some high points and some things to look at, but I mean just a couple real quick. I mean, the fact that roughly forty-two percent of the people that received this took the time to complete it, that's an excellent return for an email survey. So the data, I think, is relatively reliable based on that return. The fact that over sixty-two percent of the families responded have been residents of the district for six years or more, I think that's a telling stat. It isn't as though these are new to the families that have made other educational choices. You touched on the schools. I mean, the interesting piece to me with families that are going to public schools, over forty-one percent are not attending a district that borders over.
Right, yeah.
So that's an interesting statistic to look at, where are they going? And a good follow-up.
Yeah.
They just have other. With the private school piece, I think we all would have assumed that St. Francis was probably where most of the private school children were attending. One piece that I think is important for you to know from like a legislative or advocacy standpoint, as of now, the Madison Diocese is not in the voucher program. If that were to change, that don't have a dramatic impact on Wisconsin Heights. So as that's being talked about, just understand that right now we're not being impacted much by the voucher program, but if the Madison Diocese were to get in it, we would. So that's just another one. And then I think, you know, the other piece, over fifty-six percent of the students who left did so on either 4K or 5K. So the fact that if we don't get them upfront, and we've talked about this before, then it's really hard to get them back in the district for whatever reason. So what are we doing upfront to try to get our resident students to attend our school? And then really just last, last piece, what we've talked about, what we've looked at is like, what do we have an influence over? So some of these factors, you know, the number one response, the location, that we can't change. So that, we acknowledge that fact, but things like culture, teacher quality, curriculum quality, things like that, how we can impact. So then what can we do to try to improve? So I left the slide or the final slide just, what are we doing, what are the future ideas? So I just wanted to do, if we could just get this data and say, this is cool, got the data, we talked about it, and here's kind of some of our next steps.
Yeah.
So, there's any other questions?
I thought it was, I'll just make my remark, I thought about almost sixty-six percent never attended Wisconsin Heights to begin, but I thought that was kind of interesting. The other thing is twenty-nine point four one percent, I think are headed, I'm just, I made some cryptic notes here to Mount Hora. Any, any idea, are they, would they be like the Vermont families more than not? Or I suppose it really wouldn't matter if parents work in Mount Hora from Maiso Lecker? I thought that was kind of interesting.
I didn't care any more detail than that, but I mean just from some of the situations that we've had the last couple of years where people have actually petitioned for the boundaries.
Right.
Those were residents of the town of Vermont, which then I, in that case, already opened and rolled afterwards. So.
I guess the other thing too, there seem to be a lot of subjective measures as far as impressions go of the district. I mean, none were really concrete. I mean, that's really a lot of opinions. So that kind of goes hand in hand a little bit with the, all of the information about our, our attempt to get out to, to the community using various social media sites and so forth to kind of tell our story.
So were these all anonymous responses?
Yeah, I sent it out, all trust, it's a survey platform.
So were they allowed to put their name what they wanted to?
No.
I am curious about the thirty-four percent that did attend Heights and then left for whatever reason, kind of drill down a little bit and see what, I know you have some reasons that just, it would be interesting to hear their stories, I guess.
I think two pieces. If there was any group that would be incredibly disenfranchised with the school district, it would be open and roll out, you know, homeschool, private school. I mean, they made a choice for some reason. So inherently, the information that we would be receiving back, you would suspect it would be pretty critical. However, I mean, most of the free form comments I listed there, I mean, the most frequent response was, you know, five of whom made a comment about their child's needs weren't being met for various reasons. We never want that to happen, but the reality in an open and roll voucher world that we live in, the volume is not speaking to systemic issues, it's speaking to the society and culture that we live in where people make choices. And I'm assuming any other district could give a similar survey or receive similar responses. So yeah, it's just a matter of how do we continue to try to improve and be better. But I didn't see any of this information as something that was, you know, troubling or damning in that we're doing something that is just so egregious that we have this black hole, family that working elsewhere, that certainly, none of the data points to that, which I think is encouraging.
Well, I think it's important what we do here with our, our culture implement, staying positive and everything that we do. And I, I know of families that have left for a year or maybe even two years and then they come back. So as long as we just keep doing what we do and we're positive and we're promoting a good culture, I think that's what we can control.
I'm interested to see what an impact will have after, you know, once we do get that after-school program in place, you know, if that will then encourage those people that have left to come back. Interesting.
Certainly step in our regard, you know.
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
And you look like the booster club came through again here, huh? That was kind of neat.
Yeah, very, very generous. These soccer shelters, they sure came in handy in sectionals with the boys. We visited Lake Mills and played in the snowstorm. It was really nice to see that they had those and there's quite a few teams in our conference that have them, so it'd be kind of nice to, to join them and provide shelter for our kids. Spring and fall, both can, you know, bring some, some pretty unpleasant weather, so I think that's really nice. One of our families I know supplies a heater that goes along with that, propane heater, so, yeah.
Gary, you had mentioned the child fine, child development fair. I just want to recognize Becky Schutz, who puts hours and hours of planning into coordinating the child development fair, you know, whether it's contacting community vendors, getting individual folders for each kid based on their birthday, you know, set up, setting up tables, getting balloons, it's just Becky puts in hours and hours, so I want to, I want to say thank you, Becky.
That'll be February seventeenth, right?
It's totally whitey.
February seventeenth.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, so then we are going to move on to five point one, action to approve the school board vacation selection process.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing done. Mike, you have any, Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I will guess as well. Okay, we're on to six point one, budget and finance.
I think we'll be having a lot of discussions, I think we can pass on that one as we move forward, not from now.
Curriculum.
Yeah, we're probably, we're looking to bring a recommendation for our new DLA adoption at the elementary level in March, March school board meeting, so maybe as early as the, as of March thirteenth. So that's the work we're doing right now.
All right, employee relations.
No, I don't, not at this time.
And we're on to six point four, facilities and transportation. Mike, you have anything to say as a chair before I hold on?
I think we got quite a few things to run, so we'll let it.
All right. Keep wondering what went into our presentation then.
Yeah, no, welcome our visitors from Performance Services and floor is yours. Jim and team, go ahead and take it away. Okay, well, thank you very much. My old faces, my old faces, some new faces in there. My name's Jim Weedy, Business Development Manager with Performance Services. My team, we have Mike Fletcher, he's our project manager, Jason Ray, our lead architect, and Scott Zigman, Vice President of Performance Services. I'm going to let Scott do a little introduction.
Great, let's go ahead and get at it. Well, good evening again. My name's Scott Zigman, I'm the Vice President of Performance Services. I'm very excited to be here today. For those of you who don't know us, we've been around for about twenty years, we've done about one point five billion dollars worth of work. We're closing in on five hundred projects and about ninety percent of those are K-12. So that's why I'm so excited to be here today, because what you're trying to get done over the next couple of years is really our bread and butter. So I'm the Vice President at the company, this is very important to us, but what really, the reason I was drawn to the company eleven years ago was the culture. And it's funny, Jordan just mentioned that and I didn't know you were going to say that tonight, but anytime I'm, I'm asked to come visit customers, and we do about sixty to seventy projects a year, and fortunately or unfortunately, I'm involved in most of those, I really want to get across who we are. And this is why I was drawn to the company, this is why I stayed with the company, this is why customers continue to buy from us. Jim and the team are going to get into the details of things, but what's really important to us is our, our word is our bond. So when we talk to you about what we're going to do, there are not going to be any change rules, okay? We're going to work with you as we have the last two and a half years. For those of you who haven't been involved, we've been working about two and a half years on these solutions, but our word is our bond. Not going to read through all of these, but I want to make sure that you know that you're in control of this. What you're going to see tonight, there are going to be changes to that. But I think what's really important is you make this decision, is who do you want to work with? That's what customers tell us all the time. We pick the who, the what, there are a lot of great companies out there, but who is the company that you're going to be able to trust? Because you know what, in a construction project, as most of you know, there are going to be challenges and problems. And so you've got to be able to count out a team that's going to get through those with you. So again, I'm very excited to be here tonight, I'm going to be part of any questions that you may have. But this is who we are, and I want to make sure to get that across you before we get going. All right? Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Scott. So before we get going on, our three options that Jordan asked us to, to bring about to you, just a little background on where we came, you know, how did we get here? Back in two thousand seventeen, we did a facility study for the district, and it was pretty thorough. Our engineers and our architects really looked at all your buildings with a fine toothed comb. We looked at all the equipment that you had, gave you the age of the equipment, the expected useful life, looked at, our architects looked at the building envelope, we looked at programming, how many classrooms you had, how many kids, where your enrollment was coming from, a lot of things throughout all your buildings. We also looked at budgets and designs for a possible new elementary school. Our architects worked on a few designs, probably three or four, and we came up the best one that we thought was the best solution for you and the district. We came up with some budget numbers that, you know, from two thousand seventeen to now have pretty much stayed consistent. They've gone up a little because of inflation and we've changed scope a little bit, but from then till now, we've pretty much been very consistent. We haven't given you a forty million dollar price tag, then come down to thirty, then twenty, then fifteen, and then we'll see what works. So we're, we're right on track. We also worked with school perceptions and we did the survey for it. Now, it didn't go out at that point, we decided to go, the district said go for an operating referendum instead. But we worked with school perceptions, we came out with the survey, worked with our designs, so we were ready to go. Since then, two thousand eighteen to twenty, we've done two small projects with you, one completed, one we're in the middle with the LED lightings. We've had multiple meetings. The district has done its due diligence and brought in another firm, checked some numbers and their designs, and that's the right thing to do. But we've been working since then behind the scenes. So our architecture team and our, our budgeting team has still been working with numbers, still been tweaking our designs, just waiting to get back in front of you. We figured when, when their time was up, we'd all get back together like we're doing today. So that's kind of the history of where we came from. We're going to ask to give you three options. First option is renovate all the schools. So the two elementaries and the high school and the middle school, what's that going to take? Well, like I said, we looked at your buildings, went through everything, and to renovate the schools, you would get new entrances, new parking, a complete upgrade, a complete remodel, all MEP upgrade, which is mechanical, electrical plumbing, kitchen restroom upgrades, roofing of course, which is always an issue, new controls, LED lighting, fire alarm upgrades. Those are some of the things that we looked at. Now, in the high school, I'm going to let Mike talk, because Mike's in the high school twice a week.
Yep.
So he's working with Bill on the lighting projects. He's seen some little things that, that we've seen that are going on, but why don't you talk a little bit about this, Mike?
Hey, everybody, thanks for having us. And thanks for the opportunities that Jim mentioned. Since about last spring, I've been at the school weekly, working with Jordan and Bill mainly, but also some of your staff and some of you in the audience, so thanks so much for those opportunities, really appreciate it. Project manager, so I'm responsible for the operations end of our process, which is basically the construction, okay? So at the high school, Jim also mentioned we did a building survey that I think some of you have heard of too, and we had our mechanical engineers make an in-depth sweep of the facility and found that a lot of your equipment is outdated, past service life. In summary, basically, there are, there are a lot of equipments on year twenty-five, twenty-six, have a useful life of about twenty years. So in summary, most of the equipment through the middle school and high school really needs to be replaced, it's kind of listed here. The chiller, chilled water pumps, the hot water pumps, the air handling units, VTV boxes. The gym AHUs as well, but also we're looking at and including in our upgrade to include cooling in those spaces, we would upgrade that equipment. Your HVAC and MAD controls and your training summit lighting control system. So obviously, the equipment is like the organs of the facility, so if you're looking at a long-term perspective of kind of what you need to do here, you can't overlook this. It may not be the most marketable thing, but it's something that needs to happen to make sure that the life of this facility is extended out properly. It also goes towards optimal learning environments. Jim mentioned that project we're doing now is LED lighting upgrades through the facility. Those are big, yeah, they have energy efficiency, I think a lot of people know that when you go to LED now, but it also creates the great foot candles in the space of the classrooms for your teachers or students. And similarly with new equipment and in hand with this, another upgrade we're going to talk about in a second, a key piece, the optimal learning environment, is also temperature and humidity control. And so getting this new equipment, upgraded equipment, is kind of a foundation, a base for what you need to do out here to really make this more premier space and facility.
So basically upgrading your high school, you're going to get the new guts, right? And that's going to last to thirty, forty, fifty years, guts to the building. Well, we're also going to look at some of the other things, the cosmetic, so we're going to do painting, right, Mike?
Right. So here's a little guide, a little map we created. Throughout the middle school, I mean, that was built in around, I think, ninety-six or ninety-seven, so when you go through that part of the facility right now, we kind of carry just light upgrades, which is select damage material replacement, ceiling tile, floor tile, a handful of doors that are in good shape, some painting, so on and so forth. And that's kind of this part of the facility up there on, on, on the diagram. But what makes sense is to focus more on the original construction of the school where things were built, I don't know, back in the fifty or sixties, and there's a lot more need for the facility. So in this diagram, we show quite a few different things happening. A focus on the common spaces, the corridor spaces, redoing the flooring, redoing the ceilings, repainting, potentially here at the main entrance, maybe having some accent pieces here, would be a nice space to do something there. We show full upgrades to all the bathrooms. The bathrooms in the high school wing are very outdated, so new tile, or tile, because I don't even know if there's tile in there, new plumbing fixtures, basically full renovation. And then another key thing in this space is getting heating and cooling throughout all the classrooms, back to that optimal learning environment, I mentioned. And a lot of times we've been doing that with the vertical classroom units, which are nice pieces of equipment that work well in those types of spaces. And you can see, basically, vertical classroom units are these kind of red highlights, about twenty-five that you would systematically put throughout the classrooms. The blue is kind of the upgrades and the common spaces. And the green is also in hand with doing the VCU units and the double with that, painting all the ceilings throughout the space. So that's kind of the summary of what we included, a little more detail what we included on upgrading the high school and middle school.
So you're going to get new guts, we're going to get new paint, new, new ceilings, new carpeting, new tiles, so it all matches. These are just some of the upgrades we've done in other schools to make it look great. Option two, creating one main canvas, building an elementary onto what you have right now. And we talked about this in previous presentations, but right now we're looking to, and addition right here in back of the school. So the orange piece right here would be the new addition, you'd have a new bus loop that comes in, and we talked about that last time. There's a lot of different things to think about when you put it on addition, and one of them is just the drop off of their kids. Jason, you want to take over?
Yeah, so previously, there was this, this drive loop here that was taken out and made into green space, but with the addition being the optimal place, being at this end of the building, it makes sense to, to restore the loop and have the, the bus drop off so that the elementary school kids would get dropped off first, and then the buses can then continue around to the high school, high school entrance off to the, to the other side. The one issue with the site is your stormwater drainage, there's a great amount of stormwater that comes from the field on the other side of the highway, and it dumps into, if you go back one slide, it dumps into this, this space right here, and this actually, this, this looks to me like it's actually smaller, so it's almost kind of a choke point, so we would, we want to be able to enlarge it a little bit, and then here's your, another existing culprit you have in a drainage wave. What we would want to do is we want to extend that drainage system out past where your new building construction would be, keep it from having any kind of adverse effects on the building itself.
So after talking with the teachers and the administration team, our design grew a little bit more than it was two years ago, but it's still almost the same footprint. We added some classrooms, Mike's going to hand out a little bit more detail. Just kind of go off what our thought process was and what you classroom.
Yeah, so keeping, keeping the elementary school pretty much separate from the rest of the, the school to keep the, keep the interaction to a minimum. We wanted to have its own entrance up here with the administration wing, and then the classes, sections actually group around the building, and as they go around the building, they graduate up to levels until they, you know, move into the middle school. Over here, we have the pre-K or four-year-old studies, we have four classrooms there and an early childhood room as well. This is the north end of the existing middle school, and in order to keep our natural light into the existing middle school, we created this courtyard, which actually could be a nice, almost warm weather instructional space for the, for the pre-K students. Down here, we are showing a cluster of special education classes, there's six classrooms there, and on each, each grade section has a common or flex space that's shared with the next section above. So if you were to have an exceptionally large enrollment for a particular class that year, then they could actually use the flex space as their additional classroom space as they, as that class then grows around through the, through the instructional space, there will always be that extra space for them to, to be able to utilize. Here we have your cafeteria with your serving area, with the idea that you can bring your food from the main kitchen into this warming area, and there'll also be coolers and stuff too for, for all the drinks and everything the kids need. But the cafeteria, thinking to be an open space and something that they, that you could utilize as maybe additional instructional space, maybe there, some of your after-school care instruction can actually happen in that space as well. Up here is the information and learning center, we have music and art, and here's two, two station gyms, so that we realize, you know, that you have two gyms now for your education, for your elementary education. We don't want to hamstring you into not having enough space, and that way you can have multiple class level, grade levels during their FIED at the same time if necessary.
I know one of the questions last time is dividing the physical.
Right, so we can implement, I, I'm showing, I'm showing light windows here, but we can also implement the clear story light like you have in your existing middle school wing, in your art room and in your. in your existing middle school wing, in your art room and in your computer lab. There's a high clear story windows that we can actually stretch over the top of the bathroom, because the toilet rooms don't need a lot of program space. We can actually utilize that space above that.
So an example of that would be something like this up there. Right. So and here's a couple of things that we've shown that we've done with other schools when it comes to the cafeteria. You can use it for public community spaces. You can use it for movie nights, they play movies on here, science fairs. But this is the lighting that we're talking about right now.
This is actually, this is actually the space in the model, like, this is the actual kind of idea to get the juices flowing, kind of throw some ideas out there for your actual cafeteria space.
And this right here?
And that is maybe a snapshot of what maybe your information center might be. Some interactive collaborative spaces for the students. There's a computer lab back here and bookshelves for your existing works that you have at your two elementary schools you have now.
Good. The other option we've done at other schools is to have a kind of a study step in the cafeteria where kids use that for when they're done with their lunch, and they go up and maybe they're studers or packer, they can use that stuff. So a lot of different things we can do. This is maybe what it could look like from the outside. So it blends in real nicely with the building that you already have. So option three, we're asked to add a performance arts center and a fitness addition. So we looked at that, and from last time, I think what we heard, we had originally designed a 320-seat option. We increased it to a 500-seat auditorium. Now, none of this is set in stone, right? We're hearing from you, we'd like to hear from the community. How many do you think you really need? Is 300 okay, or are we talking 500? We're getting the feeling that it's more of 500, and it'll still fit where we put it. So right now, we have a theater going right here, and that open space that's there now. Here's your addition, here's your bus loop, here's your theater. This is kind of a design of what it would look like with a 500-seat.
So and the reason we went with 500 is because we asked how big Socks is, if you guys have ever been up there, and that's 500. So if that gives you an idea in your head if you've ever been there.
Yeah, and we can, again, this is all, we can, it can be, I just wanna make sure it could be done in the setting that we have. It can easily be done. And this includes dressing rooms and side rooms and green rooms and storage and sound and bowls and lobby area. And then the fitness center for the community and for the students would go right next to it, right in front. These are just some of the theaters we've done. We have hundreds of pictures. Just wanna put a couple up there that show some of our capabilities. Some of the fitness centers we've done. This one's actually down in southwestern, the community uses a lot.
Those two guys look like they were really getting big there in the, right? Look at that.
Can only imagine what they're talking about right now. Let's talk about the timeline. So this is something we haven't really talked to you about. So our timeline, which we've done a lot of work on, Mike has put together an entire, what do you call this timeline?
It's a schedule, master schedule.
Master schedule?
Yeah.
So from now until November, we would help with the referendum and the referendums. Once November hits, we pass the approval of designs. In February through April, we would design complete, and then we'd bid out the entire project. We would start construction May 2021. We'd be done by August 2022, time for school to start. So we get our jobs done faster than mostly anybody else because we have everybody under one belt. All of our architects, engineers, project managers, field superintendent, control staff, we're all under one umbrella. We can get our jobs done a lot faster. Scott, what was that job we did for 34?
We did a job a few years ago in Little Indiana of $30 million in six months. So it was a lot of coordination with the customer, but also the local subs that we use. So that, these projects are all about communication. They have the right team to make that happen. But $30 million in six months was moving pretty quickly.
So this is a, this is a schedule that we're very confident we can hit. There's other firms out there and our competition that says they'll pass the referendum in November, design it for the next year from November 20 to November 2021, start construction in the spring of '22, and then finish in 2023. And then do another phase after that. Well, you're a whole year past, and a whole year is at least 5% to 7% inflation. If you're talking 5% on a $20 million job, that's another million dollars. And you're talking all the project manager time, you're talking all the construction manager time, you're talking the architects' time for a whole nother year. That's another couple hundred, 500, 600,000 dollars. So bringing it home at times, a lot more cost-effective than anybody else. So let's get to some of the costs. We've talked about these in the past. Mike, you wanna hand this out? Again, we've been very consistent with our costs from 2017 to now. We've been right in the same ballpark. So for option one, we're renovating both elementary schools and the high school. That's bringing everything up to speed for a total of $25,612. For option two, we add an addition to the high school. That includes site work and all of this, as well as the high school renovation. For $27,168. Now, these two options aren't for a 30 to 40 to 50-year-old completion for your buildings. It's gonna bring you the next 34 years. Option three is a theater fitness center. That went to $9,350. That went up a little bit from the last time we were here just because we increased it about 3,000 square feet because of the 500 square feet. Questions?
If you decide, or we decide to do the theater fitness center at a later date, is there cost savings doing it now while all the equipment and everything is here? Or is it pretty much gonna be?
There would be a cost savings.
I'm just kidding.
Now, the amount, I'm not sure. Mike?
Yeah, I know it's got.
Well, it's inflation, standard five.
Yeah, and I get that. I didn't know if it's a different, you know, because obviously, you guys are already here then. If that makes a big difference versus, you know, there's a...
Our bids would come in differently.
There'd be an efficiency of manpower there that would translate when we went to harder numbers in this or whatever in that process versus doing it, you know, a couple of years from now.
Yeah, so it's an additional mobilization. If you're already here, you're not spending the extra money on the mobilization costs.
And that's, I'm just curious what the upcharge or what that cost would roughly be more to do it, say, five years down the road?
That's really tough to estimate just because of the inflation of prices. But I will tell you, we're big in using local subs. So we would team with the local subs and talk about what do you think the best solution is here? And then come talk to you about that. I, we can't give you an answer five years from now.
Question on timeline?
Yeah.
So if we were to do either one of them and then add on the theater and fitness, would it increase your, the 2022 date? Or would, do you think you guys would have it all done in the same?
It depends on when you give us the go to do the theater and fitness center based on the timeline of finishing the design and incorporating that. Yeah, it shouldn't take, just the theater fitness alone shouldn't take the timeline of construction that's up there. So I'm thinking at least 13 months out of, you know, what we have up there, about like 16 or 17 in the construction part of the timeline. Just roughly though, I'd have to look at that a little bit closer, so.
So I guess to that end, if we were to go that route or pursue that, I mean, we have to be pursuing that through the referendum process as well, right? So I mean, that will be, we know and you'll know. Whether that was gonna happen, you know, in conjunction with the other piece. If we decided to hold off, well, then it would just, it would be when we planned the next referendum.
The other thing I didn't really talk about this timeline is that there's no interruption of school with this and with our addition, right? So we're not moving kids to trailers, we're not moving kids anywhere else. We can get the high school portion, the upgrade, when we're talking all the guts, making that brand-new, all the facade all-new. We can do that in summer while the kids are gone. Now, the building, the exterior's not gonna interrupt school, right? Or then, so we're talking no real disruption of school.
Disruption of school operations in any way.
Which is a big deal.
Yeah.
And again, like Scott said, 90% of our work is schools. But this is, this is nothing new to us. We're not putting a gas station or a grocery store and we can put it up. We have all these timelines, and we know what to do when it comes to schools and kids and disruption.
So I guess, I'm curious though, because I'm assuming this is for the new construction, if the board made the choice to go with the remodel across the board, would the timeline look the same, or would the timeline differ?
With the remodel of the elementary schools, we probably have to have one more summer season to get that down. Yeah, this is really the model for the option two.
And then relative to...
It'd be close.
We could do that a little bit deeper, but...
Yeah, we could take a deeper dive in that. We've done that before in other schools. So it's not like it can't be done. It's the amount of work that will be done, but it'd be close.
Then relative to option two with the new construction, where did that end up then in terms of total square footage for the new construction? I think very lucky.
I'm sorry, no, it was around the same amount except for the, we had 3,000 square feet to the school, or to the theater. So it was around 84 for the school addition, and then it was...
You didn't change anything from the last presentation?
Not on the school.
Yeah, we were at 87,000. From last, that we did last...
Yeah, really, really what I did was develop the lunchroom.
86,750, forget where else specific.
So I just wanna make sure you have the costly piece of, you know, what we're talking about.
So why performance services? Well, we know your buildings and your needs. We've been here for two years, we've been working with the district, work with the community. We've been pretty consistent all along, right? Our designs, I think we would come up with our budget what the community can handle. Our local bidding, for those new in here, we've talked about it many times. We're gonna bid out all the trades, and we're gonna bid it out to local people as well as larger subs. But that's gonna be able to carve out some pieces for the local people. If the H V A C is a million dollars and our local H V A C that we really want in this school, they really wanna do work can only handle 200,000, we're gonna carve the boilerwork out for them. It's just stuff that we talked about before. Get your best bang for your buck. With our process, we talked about it before, we alleviate all the levels of markup, okay? Which is a big deal, costs you a lot more. Our timeline, we're gonna get it done sooner. It's all we do is work with schools. We know how to get millions of dollars done in the summer. We guarantee no changewors. I'm our vice president, right? And we're really confident in our designs and our budget numbers for the surveys that are coming out. So we plan on giving a building that's ready for the next 30, 40, 50 years.
Board members, admin, you've been a part of a lot of this, some of you for three years too. Any other questions that you would have as people that would be working in these buildings?
What are similar sized school districts you've done renovations or new schools in Wisconsin?
I wish I might have selected it in the last presentation. The most recent was southwestern. That was a $10 million referendum back two years ago, in 2012. They added on some classroom, added on a fitness center, added on a gymnasium with an incredibly large stage, and then redid all their H V A C inside.
We've done close to $100 million worth of work here in this state in the last few years. We keep adding people. We have an office in Waukesha, but that's where we're at today, and we're gonna continue to grow that. The value proposition is resonating with customers here in Wisconsin and our eight other states, a lot because of that, but also because of the number of people that we invest upfront. And you've seen, we've done a lot of work the last couple of years to get it right, and that's what's resonating.
We talked a little bit about the concerns about the entrance and exit problems.
With the stoplight?
Yeah. Do you have anyone in-house that can help lobby with us, or?
We do.
Yeah, so we have attorney Russ Webb, who's my best friend, who's in the office next to me, as you can imagine. And we have relationships in all the states that we work in. So I think we would just be able to, I, no promises, but we would have to sit down and understand what that looks like. We recently got some legislation passed in the state of Illinois for design bill, which they didn't have for schools. Took a couple of years, so again, no promises. I do wanna go back to your point. All the customers we've ever worked with, close to 500, you can talk to any one of those customers in any of the states at any time. We'll give you that entire list. So we're really confident in who you talk to. So I forgot to add that.
Yeah, Barb, it's a, it's a long road. I'm not gonna say we can grab one right now and put it in there.
But considering the timeline, it's not something that we can even promise anybody in logistics of the timeline.
Especially that, I would, yeah.
But if we got selected, I think that would be worth a conversation with Russ to say this is the problem statement, and how, what would it cost everyone to invest to go try to do that work?
We've had lobbyists in other states that we've worked with to do other than that stoplights, but to help us in other ways, we hired lobbyists to work with, so that's something.
If I have any other question? I just wanna thank you guys, and I mean, whether it's this potential project or the projects that we've worked with, I mean, the reason you're still here is because you've been good to work with. If you would've stunk it up the last two years, you wouldn't be here.
We got Mike.
Can't wait to tell my wife, I didn't stink it up the last two years.
We're going through a performance appraisal now, so I'm gonna go back to his loss.
We can put that in there.
Mike didn't stink it up.
So I just, I mean, I say that with sincerity, so appreciate that. And then, I mean, we've communicated, I hope you feel like I've communicated with you well enough to know kind of where we're at and why we've chosen to do our homework as well. And, you know, after the meeting's over tonight, the board will have some good discussion, and we're just to that point where we need to make some decisions because we need to get the survey going and we want to get the information from our community. So you can plan to hear from me tomorrow, and we'll go from there.
We hope to earn your support, and hopefully, what you've seen last couple of years and tonight earns that, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, take two, I'll let them kind of close up shop, and then we'll grab our other visitors as well. So if you need a restaurant break or something.
I was wondering, I was like, oh, go, go, go.
Hey, Mary Douglas, you're up for shooting.
What's going on?
I'm going on a trip.
You're looking good.
I want a free tan, because I...
I feel like you've been coming back from a trip.
No, I'm going.
You wanna curl it and knock me out? Well, you look good.
Thank you.
Well, we're...
Yeah. I meant that affection.
The barn door.
Is that the...
The barn door.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's what I was gonna say.
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we'll see you. Yeah. That's excellent. Thank you.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm surviving.
Yeah.
How are you?
You can do it.
Yeah. Thank you for coming. Yeah.
Well, we're gonna come next time.
Yeah.
Well...
Sorry, I just... I mean, I'm... 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 Mike.
Yeah, it was great meeting you, yeah, thanks for coming.
Thanks again, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Isn't it exciting?
Super exciting.
I think that's the two.
Yeah, so that's a good question. Option two, added on elementary, but does that also include renovating the rest of the building?
Yeah.
Was that included in that?
Yeah, well, yeah, it was five million something years. That's a change for the renovation.
In addition to twenty-seven?
Well, it was being...
Or was it needed that he...
The addition would be twenty million five hundred. The site works like a million five.
Oh, okay, okay. Then I... I just...
Yeah, that was, that was one of the names, like, you know.
Well, I mean, the point is like... What do you do to the...
Yeah. I do really much of it. Yeah. As far as like a C or sort of a...
Yeah.
Do that.
You're making great after-school progress.
No, well, that's...
Something like that, but...
That's what the suggestion would be, the gymnasium, case of ancillary requires.
We're going to just start, you know, community... That's great, yeah.
Hell, I talked to Shelley Fittish at Black River.
Yeah. You still have... Does anybody...
What could go wrong?
What could go wrong?
Are they so far away?
I can't change the kids up there. I'm going to have to use that fitness room in the world quicker because I'm going to need to use it while I'm... I'm going to have to climb up there.
Yeah, never come back.
Yeah, Barb is...
My, my, good Barb.
Kind of interesting, but real thing.
The teachers we talked to said they have to do like...
Busy building.
Destruction of that.
So long ago.
Now we're here. This is what this is for. It's not to push each other. Actually, that's what they developed to...
Right?
In order to... So like the first group, they went on the first level and they graduated.
That's fantastic. Those scaffolding.
Education, exactly.
Fantastic.
They can actually air the top.
Right? Can you live?
All right, we can pull ourselves back together. You need four minutes, you don't have like intermissions, so. We'll pull back and, uh, we'll wrap from Bray and Myron and obviously they kind of have some, uh, same instructions. It's about thirty minute presentation and then follow up with questions just like we did on the last one as well. So gentlemen, take it away.
Thanks, Barb. Okay, um, we'll just start out with introductions. I know we've got a lot of familiar faces here, but thanks again for allowing us to come back in tonight and talk to you a little bit about our proposal and our plan. And we've shared some of this with you in the past, but a good refresher again tonight. And we'll just introduce ourselves again if there are some new faces here. My name's Craig Ellenbrook with Myron Construction. So I've been working, uh, with the team throughout the process here and working through the, the planning and, um, proposal phase.
I'm Dylan Einhardt, I'm also with Myron Construction, so I work alongside Craig and the architects on the pre-construction side specifically related to costs and dollars. Um, so sometimes the, the, the most hated guy in the world. Um, so I provide that knowledge for tonight.
I'm Clint Sully with Bray Architects. I've been helping, uh, with the solution portion of this, so some of the, uh, the designs for, uh, for the solutions and attended a number of the meetings with the administration team as well.
I'm Matt Wolf with Bray. Uh, so been involved since the outset of this engagement and looking forward to your conversation tonight regarding, uh, the plans. Want to share a few recent examples that are very relevant regarding the Wisconsin Heights. Uh, we had the good fortune of leading the Oliva Strum Single Campus Consolidation Project, so smaller single district than you in terms of student serve, but same dynamics. Closing an elementary school or considering, I should say, in your case, but they did close an elementary school in Oliva and one in Strum and added space to support the elementary program to their current middle high school. Interestingly, same thing, kind of right in, smack in the middle of the two communities. Uh, so great project, uh, really proud of that effort. Same thing in Melrose-Mandoro. This is a project that Clint and I worked on together, so I don't even know how to describe this geography. Between Black River Falls and Macross, something like that. Um, but same exact thing, closed to the elementary school in Melrose and in Mandoro and created a K-12 campus. So a lot of what we've learned from these two very recent projects, we look forward to bringing to you here in Wisconsin Heights. A little bit about the Melrose-Mandoro project, a little more applicable in terms of size. So they're a similar school district size to you. This was a project that closed both elementaries, added an elementary school to their middle school. Again, they're just in a rural part of their district on the highway between the two, so basically identical to the situation we're talking about here. Expanded, in this case, expanded and renovated their middle high school. They had some tech ed STEM needs that came along with it. They had less capital maintenance. So you have a little more capital maintenance potentially, they have a little less, so it doesn't really matter. But this was a twenty-four point seven million dollar project in two thousand sixteen. And if we inflate those dollars, it would be approximately a thirty million dollar project based on the timeframe we're talking of, twenty twenty-one, when we would be bidding. So just to get a sense of scale, two very relevant projects, not just architectural experience, but community engagement, communication, how do we message, uh, the potential closing of two schools?
The other thing we just wanted to highlight too, and again, I guess just something that we want to make sure that we can get across tonight is, is our experience. So that's one of the things that our two firms pride ourselves in, is the amount of school experience that we have in the, in the state. And what we did just in particular, we took your CISA and just looked at CISA two here and showed, we, we color coded all the districts that we've worked in between our two firms. And if you total it up, I think that there's, I think there's like forty-seven school districts, then we highlighted thirty of them. So over sixty percent of the, the school districts in CISA two, you know, we've worked in some form or fashion. It could have been elementary, middle, high school, renovations, additions, those types of things. So that is one thing that when we, when we meet with districts and talk to potential, um, client, potential clients, we say that you get really the best of both worlds because you've got the, the strongest architectural designer in K-12 and the strongest CM in K-12. And when you can marry those two together, we think there's a lot of advantages to the districts to be able to have those two, two firms working together and helping you through that process.
So we're going to jump right into our project. And for many of you, this is, some of this is a bit of a refresher as we've been, we've had the conversation a couple of times at the board level. So first off, option A is the three-school solution. So it's the solution where we make investments in all three of our existing facilities. Starting with Black Earth. So we've included in this base plan, as you requested, the capital maintenance, and we'll touch on that in a second, along with renovations. So the, the areas, I'll say in pink, as you can see generally on the screen, are what we're proposing for renovation. Includes a secure entrance and office component. Early childhood four K and five K classrooms. So you can see those starting to kind of string around on this side. Remodeling for art classroom, special end space, which is critical to any building of this type with the primary grades. And then we did, in this case, sprinkle a few flex classrooms in to support growth. You may have bubble classes that may come through, uh, that type of thing. So relatively straightforward project, all renovation in this case, along with capital maintenance. So the, the biggest piece of this is capital maintenance. It's a, it's a good sized building to start with, so it was really kind of more tweaking and refining some of the organization more than it was a wholesale review.
And this just gives you an example, so when you look at the capital maintenance. So what we did in the beginning with the district here is we spent some time in the building. So we walked around with Bill and with Jordan and really tried to understand all the capital maintenance needs that each of the buildings have here. And so what we want to do is just give you a sense again of the different items that were going to be addressed as part of our capital maintenance budget that we've established for these, for these projects. And we sat down with Jordan and Bill and then went through line item by line item, every one of those things in the capital maintenance budget and made sure that we had the right, you know, the right information there, went through all the costing and prioritized as well with them to make sure that we had everything addressed that, that the district felt was important. So we took, took all that critical and poor and incorporated that into our renovation number. So you can see there, again, we won't go line by line again, but you can see all the work that would be done at Black Earth. I highlighted some of the bigger ones, uh, complete roof replacement, uh, renovation of the large bathrooms within that facility. So that's a complete gut and remodel of the bathrooms. Complete HVAC upgrade within that building as well and LED lighting upgrades as well.
Hey, your bathrooms were hit up here, just saying.
It's actually not basement, it's the roof.
Yeah, I'm sure that's important too. So, and again, if you look at all that, we, we can feel free as we get into the discussions later here if there's any specific questions you have about that. But you can see we're addressing a significant amount of work within these buildings. So you can feel pretty confident that even though you're not necessarily renovating the whole building, when these are done, um, I think it's safe to say, Matt, the crew, that, I mean, you're basically looking almost at a new elementary school because of everything that's done with renovation, as well as all the stuff that's done with the capital maintenance set. Uh, those buildings will be around a long time.
The other thing I would say is there's a lot of subtlety into what you assume for some of these. You can have a big sway in, in budget for a roof replacement, for example. If you don't assume you're going to tear off the existing roof. If you don't assume you're going to put new insulation on. We tend to err incorrectly on this side of caution, knowing that there's going to be a lot of pockets, especially in a building that has had historical challenges with leaking, that a lot, if not all, of insulation is going to have to go. So we, we try to make the assumption in some cases like this, to be a little more conservative, make sure we've got the dollars, do the project right. Same thing with HVAC. In this case, it's a complete HVAC upgrade. Maybe there is a solution eventually, or at this point where you want to save a little bit on that project and it's more of a hybrid, if we keep some of the ductwork and we only replace major pieces of equipment. So but we're, again, we're trying to be conservative with what we assume here to make sure you get the scope that we think you need to make this building last you another thirty, forty years. So Mazo-Meyde, very similar in terms of, of scope on the capital maintenance side. We'll see that in a second. But renovation in this case, with the two-story building, a little bit different, still creating a secure entry. This is a little tricky, the addition's admittedly a little challenging and odd at the main entrance, but the main electricals equipment sits right inside the front door and really prevents any affordable connection to get from a vestibule that could be created into the office. So in this case, we think a small addition is a logical solution to create that secure into the main office. And then you can see in this case, third grade classrooms. Here we have a bit more of what we would call collaboration spaces. So these are areas where students are doing project-based learning, hands-on instruction, breakout work with either other instructors in the school or some specialists or parent volunteers, whatever it might be. You can see in this case, we've got three third grade classrooms grouped around a collaboration space. So that's a, a feature that in the long run, while they make a decision as a group, whether we think collaboration spaces or resource spaces and that type of hands-on learning environment is what we want or can afford to offer within our school facilities. In this case, we have them in, um, because we had space again as we worked through. We worked fortunately with all the principals, were heavily engaged in this programming and planning process. So we feel comfortable and confident that the spaces that would be ideal to support their instruction are, are included in some of these base options. So on the first floor, you can see third grade music, uh, art on the upper side. And then the second floor is fourth grade and fifth grade. Again, each of them having a collaboration space adjacent to each of those classrooms. So should look pretty, pretty familiar. Those two base options for Black Earth and Mazo-Meyde are similar, if not identical, to what we shared with you previously.
And then you just see down the scope, it's going to be very similar to Black Earth, like Matt just mentioned. So we, we basically are touching that entire building again. Again, the big areas are roof replacement, bathrooms, HVAC, LED. I even highlighted the bottom, you know, one thing, we try to make sure when you look at these costs, that it's total project cost, so even abatement, because when you get into existing buildings, there are some abatement that's going to have to be done with the floors or piping, those types of things. So we carry an allowance for that as well to make sure that we are able to do that as part of the scope. But again, probably it's going to look pretty much like a normal elementary school when it's done, when the model work that's being done.
And then the final project in the base option, uh, where we keep middle and high school here on this campus, is a relatively straightforward project. The major need here is capital maintenance, so we'll show you that in less than a second. But in this case, we are suggesting a move to take the office from its current location, pull it to the outside and create a secure entrance as well. So a pretty minimal renovation project, taking a couple of classrooms, remodeling for that, pushing the rest of the middle school up around, uh, around the, the wing here to take out some classroom spaces that are being used for other things right now. So creating a secure entrance out of what looks and feels like the main entrance. And then we didn't, in this case, propose any remodeling of the current office. Uh, one option that's pretty easy would be to take student services or, for example, and relocate them into an environment that they would benefit from. Conference spaces, you could envision a career center where the main reception is, that kind of thing. Detail, we may want to talk about a little more work there, but we didn't have enough interaction with staff on exactly what we'd want to do there. So this base option has the secure entry renovation included in it.
And again, from a capital maintenance standpoint, you can see a lot of the things. Um, for example, there, here the complete HVAC upgrades in the high school portion of the building, the older portion. Uh, but HVAC controls are being updated throughout the entire building. And again, you see a lot of the things, there are some partial roof replacement, flooring, ceilings, uh, food service, equipment. Again, just trying to, again, make sure that we're addressing everything that, that needs to be addressed within this building, so.
So that's our most extensive project because it touches all three buildings. The others will be a little easier because they're focused here on this campus.
And then that is how the numbers broke out again. So just to give you a sense, uh, then this is where you hate Dylan because we wouldn't do the budgeting for it, but this is, you know, so the capital maintenance, you can see is about, you know, almost eight million at Black Earth, about two million dollars in renovation and then totaling about, you know, nine point eight. Mazo, or Mazo-Meyde is roughly, again, a little over eight million. Then addition, again, just for that secure entrance. And then about almost a million and a half that are renovations, a little over ten million dollars. And then, uh, middle school, high school, primarily just the capital maintenance. The renovation of that office area to create that secure entrance. Uh, when you look at that, it's a little under, a little over nine million. So your total scope on that one's above twenty-nine point six million. So that is option A.
And these are project costs. So in our world, there's two separate buckets. There's a construction cost, just the actual dollars needed to put the work in place on the job site. And then there are soft costs, as they're referred to, contingencies, fees, permits, all the other stuff that has to come along to make that construction project happen. We consider both of those together, project costs. So this is what we envision as an all-in project cost. It's not just construction and you have to add a percentage on top. So we, all of the numbers you see tonight are all in project cost. So that's option A, as I said, the three-campus solution. So moving to option B, the one-campus solution, we've got two versions of B. So we're going to share the first one with you. What we're calling is the minimal scope approach. So in this case, um, what we do is we really leave the middle, basically leave the middle and high school alone, uh, with the exception of creating the secure office and entrance at this location as we did in, in option A. So very similar, we could create the secure entrance out of what is and acts and feels like the main entrance now. We can backfill student services into the current office. And then we add a two-story addition of the back. You can see some playground spaces here. The only renovation we need to make this happen is a small connection to make this corridor work. So you come down to the first corridor, main corridor, and you connect into the addition. So the only renovation we see here is for the secure entrance for middle high school and a small more renovation to support that connection. The new building itself is about eighty-six thousand square feet. Uh, that includes an office and secure entrance for the elementary school right here. It includes the site improvements to, to create a new elementary entrance. It includes three classrooms per grade. It includes three classrooms per grade level in fourth grade through fifth grade. Art and music classrooms are included within this eighty-nine or eighty-six thousand square feet. Library's included, elementary library. A cafeteria and kitchen is included. We have a two-court gymnasium, so we're, if in this scenario, we remove Mazo Mani and Black Earth, we have two basketball courts or rec spaces that we're losing. So we're recreating those with two courts here. And these are not right now two courts scrunched in, this is two courts with ten feet of clearance on each side and ten feet in the middle. We can, they're true basketball courts as well, they're not shorter courts or narrower courts, so these are fifty-foot by eighty-four-foot courts, ten feet of clearance around and ten feet in between. That's always an area that can be pinched, but we don't like to start a project pinching that out. If you make a decision, we make a decision as a group to pinch that, that's an option to save money, to save square footage, but we didn't start there. We've got a real nice gym here to get started. And then in addition to the three classrooms per grade level, we have two flex classrooms. We're trying to get three ideally, but again, we're trying to be responsible with square footage and budget. And then we have specialized classrooms included. Now, you will see, in this case, no collaboration or resource spaces, or those project-based learning environments that we had shown in some of the renovation at Mazo Mani and Black Earth. Those aren't included right now, mainly because, and that's why we refer to it as the minimal scope. It gets you the classrooms, it gets you the special ed, the gym spaces, it's got all the essentials, the basics. It doesn't have some of those other components that you may be interested in to support some of the teaching and learning moving forward.
And again, so on option B, you can see, of course, Black Earth and Mazo Mani don't have anything happening because those come offline. So then we've still got the capital maintenance at the middle high school. Now we've got the addition of the elementary school, so that's about twenty-four million for that, and then the renovating spaces. So roughly, it's about thirty-three and a half million. Again, total project cost, that's looking at everything involved with that. The other component of this that starts to play into it is what we call FFE. So when you're adding that amount of square footage, you also want to have appropriate amount of furnishings for those new spaces. So that includes all the dollars and everything to be able to furnish those spaces as well. So again, looking at it as a total project cost. Always open to discussion, you know, those numbers can be altered depending on, you know, if you want to try to reuse existing furniture or whatever the case may be, but we try to make sure that we're on a cohesive start.
The other thing, this includes all the site development costs. There are larger site development costs associated with building on this site than some others. We are assuming intersection improvements related to the highway connection. We're assuming a lift station, we're assuming a new well, a cistern to support fire protection. So those are things that have to come along with any project, and it doesn't matter if it's eighty-six thousand square feet or seventy thousand square feet. We have some baseline fixed costs that have to come along to support any project of any size. So in that case, they would be in regardless, but we want to make sure, you know, this is, again, all in, all site development as well.
Does that include, like, playground?
I think, is everybody going to put them in?
Yep, yep, they have a lot on for that.
That's one that's really hard to get enough, because we know how expensive that is, but we do have an allowance included. So that's option B. Option B one, we went a little off script, and really just bringing back an option that many of you have seen before, which is what we refer to as the optimal scope. So this is back to some of the work we did with building level leadership regarding some of the goals for space that they may have. We're not advocating for this, we just wanted to kind of point out the differences between the two options, so that you can get a sense of programmatically what isn't included before, or what isn't included in the base option B, which would be in this B one. Okay, we're not advocating for it, we just want to make sure you understand what wasn't what had included. So this, again, should look relatively familiar. This is a little more intense renovation. This is where we create the elementary school basically out of the middle high school. So elementary school generally, middle school pushes itself up basically into the current high school. And then in this case, there's some shared spaces for sure between middle and high school, but middle school base academics, or sorry, high school base academics, buy-in, and then office secure entry are included as part of this addition. So the big moves are, all of this space through the current middle school is elementary space, along with the two-story addition. We remodeled the current entry sequence, so basically just right outside the doors here, along with the current office would be a cafeteria. The kitchen is remodeled and expanded where it sits. Now we've got a kitchen that can prep food and serve to the middle high school side existing, and prep food and serve to the elementary side, which would be a cafeteria created out of this main entry sequence here. And then as we move around, as we mentioned before, remodeling to support middle school programming. And then in addition, to support high school classrooms, labs, office and secure entrance, a small set of locker rooms here, and then a two-court gymnasium. In this case, we're suggesting, if it is the high school, it could be the competition gymnasium, where we could put a larger set of bleachers in there to support that. In addition, site work here, road to connect back, more parking in front, playground to support the elementary school. So again, for board members and many of the admin team, this should look pretty familiar. It's a base option that we've been working with you on over the last number of months. We get it on all of that. We have collaboration spaces included here in both the middle school, high school, and elementary school. So this has that collaboration or resource space spread throughout each of the schools.
But again, just because of the size of the addition, so that's where the number starts to go up a little bit, because you've still got your capital maintenance, which stays as it was before, but now your addition, because you have both the elementary and the high school addition, you're at roughly thirty-three million on the addition, and then more extensive renovation within that space, because now you're renovating the existing middle school and high school spaces. So you're at about a little over forty-six million on that, on that option.
So you guys have been doing this for a while. Although the last, the option, we're going to call it B one or whatever, is a lot more complicated, because everybody is having to, basically, go to a new place. That was kind of your original plan that you guys came up with, and is that because you just kind of look at from all the projects that you've done, is that the best way to kind of make use of your space? And then you give the high school kids some new space that they had, or the other one they don't have any space?
It was a variety of reasons. It was a lot of engagement with the building level leadership, understanding their needs and their goals for teaching and learning moving forward. It's also a relatively typical process, where we begin with what we've kind of envisioned as the best-case scenario. We know money's an object, it always is, you can see it, there's a very distinct difference financially between B and B one. So we fully understand that. That's why I said, we're not advocating for B one. B one really grew out of a lot of engagement with staff, a lot of our understanding. It did grow out of a lot of our local experience, knowing what a lot of other districts are doing in some of the spaces and trying to provide their educators and students. Not everyone's in a position to do it. So again, if you say coming out of here, B's good, let's go, we're good with it. It's a good, solid building, it has the resources you need. We would need a validation, program validation effort with your team to make sure that we're not missing something, but based on our interaction over the last few months, it's a good, solid plan that has the spaces you need. It doesn't have as much of the collaboration, it doesn't have, it does not, as you mentioned, really affect high school. We'd be building, building elementary gym, we probably don't need a significant amount of bleachers, we'd stay with our competition gym here.
So I think that kitchen cafeteria area is a little bit more of a challenge in this one, because you're not, you know, creating that.
Correct, that's your point.
I mean, that, so that was something that grew out of the discussions that we had, is that there was concern that once you bring the elementary over, you know, does the existing state have the adequate size, capacity, resources to be able to serve all grades? So that's where we started to get a lot of discussion about that aspect of it. And I think the other thing, there was just discussion about, you know, it would serve your purposes now, but, you know, this is a big investment for the district and for this community, and you also want to make sure that in five years, seven years from now, that, that space still functions appropriately. And you don't want to build something like this and then be sitting there in three years or four years feeling like you're, you're maxed out, you know, for space and resources, and you know you're not at the point where you're going to be able to go back for a referendum at that point. So that was a lot of the discussion too, is, you know, what, are we doing this, is it the right solution for the future? And again, as Matt said, we know, ultimately, you have to weigh dollars and cents in that, I mean, that just has to factor into it, because there's tax impacts and the community is only going to support so much. So it's that give and take, you know, can you go with the bare bones versus the, you know, everything you need, or can you somehow find something in the middle that can sort of serve a lot, you know, solve a lot of your problems, but still make it palatable for the community? So that was sort of some of the stuff we struggled with, is how far along with some of that.
Well, I appreciate that, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good.
It's like, you know, in the, in the B, in the, in the B one, if you were to, you know, then you're, you're having this expanded gymnasium, and when people come to your school, you know, from visiting from other teams or other, that's what they see, your new space, and it's kind of, I don't want to say you're selling your school on that, but people are not coming to the school, they're going down and looking at the elementary as part of it, even though that will be what you're investing in science.
And we honestly never studied B two, which might be some version where we don't build an elementary gym, they travel down and use this gym, and we don't remodel the office, and we build the office bathrooms in a gym. We, that's kind of a B two, if we come back and use a board, so you know, we like these aspects of B one, we liked the simplicity of B, let's kind of put those two together and see if we can get closer. That's always how this process goes, it's always iterative, we're always exploring more before we get to a solution that feels right to everybody. So that's B one, one campus solution. And the final question was related to the auditorium and wellness. So the option C pieces, we treated these all as additive to the others. So the first project would be a weight, uh, sorry, an auditorium with a low weight space or weight fitness center in this location. This is about a five-hundred-seat auditorium, a thirty-five-foot deep by one-hundred-foot wide stage, dedicated lobby up front, cold-required bathrooms, auditorium support spaces in the back here, and then parking to replace some of the parking that was removed as part of this project. The next piece is a weight and fitness room, so you can see the box highlighted in red here. This would be weight fitness space, toilet, shower, changing room included in there. Whether they're individual, privately, we have to work out the details with you on all of that. And we've taken the community entrance component in mind, so you can envision this inner set of doors being locked, having some reserved parking for fitness center users, they'd be able to pop in, get in the main set of doors into the fitness without getting anywhere else into the school. We try to maintain that as if you have a community access goal, this positioning works very well for that.
Now, the other thing with that, I know we talked about the location of that weight room and fitness center too, I mean, for the purpose of tonight, we lumped those together in that area, I mean, that's still a moment of discussion. I know we started to have some discussions with you on that, is to, I mean, the auditorium definitely makes sense on that end, but, you know, if you, if you want to look at other locations for the fitness, weight room area, that would be fine as well. Again, and this one, because we never really got to explore too much farther with you guys on it, we did do a range, because especially when it comes to auditoriums, there's a lot of different levels you can go with an auditorium, with the finishes that you use, the amount of lighting that you put into it, the sound systems, you know, the rigging. So for now, we said that range could be anywhere from eight and a half to eleven and a half for the auditorium. And then the wellness center, we said from one and a half to two million. So again, we would want to continue to work with you guys to really flush out exactly, you know, what you want that space to look like and what level you want to take those to.
Complete transparency, these do not include the base components of public roadway improvements, lift station, well. We've treated these right now as an add-on tool. So we're assuming that one of the academic projects would come first, and these would be added after. So we will allow those bigger projects to carry the cost of those fixed site components we described before. So complete transparency, these don't include that, because we're assuming those are coming with another project. And we didn't want to double them up and have these be more expensive, because we don't need them in both places. So in, in closing, we wanted to share a little bit of our experience again with you and give you some sense of comparison. So we've had the good fortune, just great, the great team, we didn't put any of the Myron examples in this, we've done some projects with Myron in this, but we've done nine new elementary schools in the past six years. We've completed those projects with four, I think we said, different construction managers, so not all Myron. We bid a few of the projects out competitively. The just construction costs, so this is getting to be semantics, but to try to create the, in apples to apples, we took out all the soft costs, because some districts did a bunch of technology, some didn't do any, so we tried to boil it down to just the cost to build the buildings. We have a range of the lowest per square foot, these are all inflated to twenty, twenty-one dollars to try to draw a comparison. The lowest cost per square foot inflated is one hundred ninety-four dollars. The highest cost per square foot is two hundred ninety dollars. That's crazy. It's a hundred-dollar swing on an elementary project. It does two things, it points out the challenge of comparing cost per square, whoa, sorry.
That was me.
So what, this does two things, it points out the significant discrepancy you can have when you just look at a cost per square foot. This two-eighty-nine is Oregon, net zero school, roof covered in photovoltaic panels, expensive glass, because they're going to produce as much energy as they consume in a year. Great comparison, but doesn't, isn't appropriate. The average is about two hundred nineteen dollars a square foot. So you can imagine we got things all over the place, from one ninety-four to that two-eighty-nine and a whole bunch of different things in between. Our option B pricing tonight is two hundred and sixteen. And to be upfront and very honest, I didn't tell them what this average was, they did the budget first, and we plugged the average in here, this just came this morning. So we did set this average up to support the two sixteen, we had this built beforehand to try to make sure that we're in the ballpark, and this felt pretty good. How do we do that? Why is there such a range? The one thing, again, we're trying to be very transparent with how we go about this process. This used to be, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, when Craig and I were doing this all of this, they, it was kind of the race to the bottom. We'd have these meetings, and we'd only get hired if we were the lowest cost. We're the lowest, well, I could build that building for a hundred twenty dollars a square foot, well, somebody else said they could do it for one fifteen. You got in this race where you were in these meetings committing to budgets for the sole purpose of winning the project, and eventually, the market dictates what this costs, not your architect or not your construction manager. We're your conduit to the market, we're in it every day, we understand what these things cost. All these things you see up on the screen, and I'll touch on a few, are ways that we could swing that cost per square foot by thirty to forty dollars, in terms of quality, in terms of quantity of things. We don't like to start a project or a relationship with a client by saying it's a hundred eighty-five dollars a square foot, could we get you there? We probably could, but I'm not sure you're going to be happy with it. You're going to have an inferior roofing system. There can be a fifteen-dollar a square foot swing just in the roofing selection you make. We're assuming a solid B wing. It's not a Cadillac, it's not a Chevy, it's a good, solid, middle-of-the-road roof that's going to last you a long time. And then we've got decades of experience understanding the quality. If you want to take a step down, because it saves load, that's great, but we think that's your decision, it's not our decision. We shouldn't go into this assuming that you're going to want the lowest quality or the lowest quantity of all the different things it takes to make a school like this work. Same thing goes in the flooring. This is the tried and true old vinyl composition tile, that's in every school built in the eighties, nineties, and even a few nowadays. We're really trying hard with clients, if we can afford it, to get in a flooring that doesn't require stripping and waxing every year. You've got shortages of staff, you're spending money to strip and wax a floor, let's not do that. It takes a little more upfront. The first cost of a flooring that doesn't require that is a little more. There's probably a four or five-dollar a square foot swing to get to that flooring type. Not our decision to make, we have to make that decision with you as to what the right quality of flooring is. I won't go through all of them, but you can get a sense of where the big swings are. We want to make sure you're making a good, solid decision on a partner who's going to help you through this process, you're going to understand what you're getting. We're going to sit down and have these conversations about all your goals for quality, we're going to give you options, and you're going to understand what you're getting, to make sure that when you get to the end, there isn't unexpected things that come up. So with that.
The other thing that I was, as Matt was talking, I just thought I should mention at the end too, is keep in mind too, once you get through, so we're getting you to the point right now of getting ready for a survey, and then ultimately, if the survey results come back favorably, getting ready for a referendum. So we have a dollar amount that you guys have to be comfortable with, that when you go to referendum, that you can do and, you know, provide the community what you're saying in that referendum. When it gets past the referendum and that referendum passes, keep in mind that everything is competitively bid. So you're working with this team right now, but you're hiring Myron, for example, during that construction phase, as the manager. So we're managing the project. So we're managing the project. Everything that we do on this project is competitively bid. It doesn't matter if it's a masonry, if it's the electrical, if it's the drywalling, it's the painting. All of that goes through a competitive bid process. So the district will, you know, receive any of the savings that are received through that bid process. We feel pretty comfortable that the numbers that we're using, because we're building these types of buildings every day. We know roughly what these things cost, but ultimately, you know, we, we aren't the ones necessarily doing all this construction. So I want you to think if the referendum passes, that Myron comes in and provides all the resources and builds all this. We, we are managing the project. We supervise it. We would, there's certain trades that we would bid on. So if we want to bid on masonry or carpentry or whatever, but we have to supply bid just like anybody else. So we would provide that bid, but we want to make sure that we would use local, you know, subcontractors and suppliers through that process as well. So that we're, as Matt has talked about transparency, you know, we're very transparent in that process. So we are out and we are soliciting bids on your behalf. And here we're going to review all those bids and help us decide who's going to be building those, those projects for you. Okay? So with that, I guess that's it for us and we'll take any questions that you have.
Yep.
Um, the other company prior to that, no change orders. Can you talk a little bit about your change order process and any soft costs involved in that or?
Sure. So we watch closely change orders. Uh, we have about a two to three percent change order rate, uh, on a project. Uh, there's three categories that falls into. About one percent of that is for, I'll say bad soils or unsuitable soils. So it's as you get out and start excavating and, and doing the work, you're going to find some soils that aren't stable enough to support. And you have to remove those and replace them. That's an unpredictable change order. Nobody can say they don't have those. They happen on every project. It's out of everybody's control. The other change order, we have about one percent, our owner change orders. Those are good change orders. Those are the ones that when you're in, in the building and you say, gosh, you know, now that we're in, we should have put an electrical outlet over there. That's a good change order. That's you as an owner taking control, spending some dollars to get your building right for you. And the third piece is about one percent, uh, are drawing discrepancies. So there is no perfect set of drawings. We're going to do everything we can to do quality control. Myron's got people that do it. We have people that do it. The industry average is about four to five percent. So we're still well under that, especially if you look at a one to two percent per hour piece of it. No change orders is, I, I'm not trying to be, demean the prior group. I don't think it's a realistic expectation to set. There's good, there's bad change orders. The first two, one's unavoidable, bad soils. The other is a good change order because it's you getting your building right. And the third is one we work really hard to prevent, but wouldn't be honest if we stood here and said they don't happen because they do. Every project has that.
And in our process with change orders, nothing is done without authorization from the owner. So anything that has to have a change order, we provide you with the documentation, that information. And you have to give us authorization to, you know, put any dollars towards that. And there's also, again, when we look at that total project cost, there's contingency that's built into that as well. So you also look at that during that project, that the contingency can take care of a lot of those issues. So I will say, you know, when you use this process that you're talking about now of having the team working together from the beginning. You do limit the change orders because we have the ability to walk through the drawings very early and, you know, everybody's on the same page. So we know what we're getting into. And the other thing I, just as I'm thinking here as we're talking is depending on how much renovation you do. I mean, there's always things that you run into from renovating space that you just don't know what's behind them. Especially if we keep the two existing elementary's open. Um, you know, you just never know if there's some things that you're going to run into. Again, the contingency hopefully will take care of that, but.
Yeah, there's a lot more risk there than there is on these campuses.
Yep.
Can you talk about what the timeline for construction would work out? Is it classroom won't be affected throughout the whole process? Is it going to be completed by a certain, you know, what, what do you mean time wise?
Is there an option that would make sense to kind of transitize through or?
Not necessarily. I'm just curious if there, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. So the additions are actually pretty straightforward, right? Now the easy part of this, we can be doing that work fenced off, safe, secure location. Um, this is a, let's say it's a twenty-five to thirty million dollar project. There's a probably about a year-ish of design and engineering. So pass in November, about a year's worth of time to design and engineer. You would start construction coming out of the ground in spring of twenty twenty-two. Would that be? Gosh, that's crazy. Spring of twenty twenty-two and would be open for the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school here. There are ways to accelerate that. We can break this into bid packages. We can get foundations started earlier. We can try to rush a package out for that first summer to get some work done here. Maybe we re-roughen the first summer. We would just have, once we get the final list of exact scope, we'd work with you on the, the right balance between rushing something to market to take advantage of that first summer window. Uh, and getting it right. This is a, this is about as clean a project as it gets. That's a summer office renovation. This is a clean project. You do it while kids are going to school and you open it. You try to get it done in July. So you have at least a month and a half or so to do the move in. The capital maintenance is the harder part. That's going to be the tougher one that we have to work through. It's probably a two summer capital maintenance plan, I would guess.
Yep. Maybe go back to A just to show, because A would be the one that.
A stuff.
A is going to be tougher because you're, you're going to have to phase some of the work. So in the, in those existing elementary schools, you know, what we would start to do is working with the principals and everybody and just start talking through, you know. When I remember when I first started, I saw all that work could be done in summer. We, you know, that, it just isn't feasible. I mean, summers don't last very long anymore. It's maybe a couple of months. So, you know, you have to look at this and, you know, what we start to do is work with the principals. And if they can vacate certain spaces to allow us to, you know, maybe kind of work in some of the classrooms. And temporarily they can use, um, a portion of the IMC maybe for a couple of classes or something that we can get in and start to renovate some of those spaces. And then we just sort of work through that with them as we finish spaces, then they can move in and then we take over another space. The one thing I, I always tell districts though is that, you know, we're never going to have to shut down the school. So we, we aren't going to have to worry about taking a school offline. We don't have to worry about bringing in portable trailers to be able to, to, you know, work with these with the, during the school year. So we worked through that process. Um, is there a little bit of inconvenience maybe for that year of construction or whatever? Yes, but most of the time the, the principal and the staff are understanding of that because they know that there's light at the end of the tunnel, that they're going to have a, you know, great school when it's done. But so that one, you know, when we look at the renovations, those would probably just be a little bit more phasing, would be involved over, you know, a year and a half, maybe something like that.
Good question though.
Yep.
So you mentioned, you know, bidding out certainly to local. Can you talk a little bit about local? Can the smaller guy work for pieces or do you want just one done kind of your thought process?
So again, I guess, you know, on the renovation, you know, that really won't be an issue because it's a lot of smaller projects. When you look at the addition, that, that's how we would, we'd have to sort of talk to you about that and find out. So we've done it a couple of different ways. Um, you know, there's advantages at times just to have one person come in and, and just do everything, you know, from that perspective, from a schedule and, and those types of things. But if there's a local, let's say a local electrical contractor or a local plumber that, that wants to participate and can't necessarily do the whole project. We don't have a problem of, of looking at breaking up pieces of it and trying to make sure that we can accommodate them if they, if they're interested in doing that.
There's, there's great examples. Site concrete and building concrete is a pretty clean one. We can separate pretty easily. Sometimes we'll do exterior electric separate from interior electric. So maybe somebody's got the ability to do the parking lot lighting and some of the exterior scope, but they can't do, don't have the, the horsepower to do the whole project potentially. Cabinetry sometimes, we had a case where there was a small cabinet shop that really wanted to be involved, but really had the ability to do the main reception desk, but didn't want the rest. So working with you and your local suppliers to find out kind of where the sweet spot is. And we're going to do everything we can to, to find ways to get them involved. Those are just three examples that are, are recent and have come to mind.
Um, the two school districts you mentioned, um, that also consolidated from two local villages. Did you have any takeaways as far as the community engagement and kind of the emotional aspect of what it took to manage that?
You know, it's interesting. They both were afraid to ask the question admittedly, and I think they were right to have that fear. They both followed the same process you're following, which is using school perceptions and a school survey. Um, the results came back in both cases very supportive. I'm looking at Clint. He was very integral in both of those projects. Um, I think once that survey data came back, that empowered the board to make the tough decision and go to put that on the ballot. And both were successful. I think now, especially Mel Rosso, my sense is they're pretty happy with the end result. It was painful early for some of them emotionally, but the end product has kind of proven to them that it was the right decision.
Yeah, and really the Mel Rosso, Dorro example, their tax, uh, bill rate increase went up over two dollars. I think it was like two dollars and one cents. So it was a big burden on taxpayers. So I would say some of the sentimentality of the, of the buildings and communities, uh, unfortunately was reduced. Or maybe was tied to that tax increase a lot more. And there's a lot of farmers in the area that had massive plots of land. Um, so again, it was a major burden on, on a lot of those people. So I would really have to be careful with how we message that and communicate it, uh, be sympathetic with, with that.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you go to the B two one with that?
Uh huh.
So in this one, you put the performance arts center down in that corner where you got the gym. So where would the performance arts center go?
Yep.
So this, we did recreate every iteration of the auditorium. So one of the prior scenarios, a couple of months ago. We actually had the auditorium sitting out in front of this. So this lobby space became a shared lobby for the gym and the performing arts center. Remember that was when we got good feedback about making for the road extended around, which we were able to do. Yep.
Yeah. So we could definitely look at, I mean, we could look at it more broadly than I did do it as well. It's just a matter of what, how that tests in the survey.
Can you, um, just talk a bit about the two companies? So, you know, what happens if you don't like each other one day? You're now busy with a project. How, how does that work?
We've completed over fifty projects together now, probably more than that. I know Craig and I have worked together for twenty-three years now. I've been through twenty-four. You've been with Myron a little longer than that. So there's a long track record. Are there days I don't like Craig? Yes. Are there days that works to our client's benefit? Yes, right? I mean, there's a mutual respect. We do work together. We deliver projects successfully together. But the benefit of having two organizations that aren't contractually wed to each other, are only wed to you, are only responsible to you as a client. Is that, that friction that may be there, isn't there a lot? We do work really well together. But if it gets in that situation, you do have two advocates working on your behalf. Uh, that are going to be working diligently to find the right solution and the right answer for you.
Yeah, I guess the, you know, where he just mentioned, the one big thing is that even though we, we were here as a team, contractually, you would have two separate contracts. So Bray would contract with the district for the architectural and then Myron would contract with the district for the construction management. So we're each operating independently. You know, we're working together as a team, but ultimately, you know, we're still looking at the district's best interest. So I think that's important to understand. And, you know, we're not big into finger pointing and all that type of stuff because our reputations are built on our references. So if we, you know, again, we look back at that C sub two map and you look at all the districts that we work in. If we had bad projects in those districts, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight because, you know, Jordan knows those people. You as board members know some of those people too. So, so we, you know, we work all together and, uh, again, but I don't do, Bray doesn't do every project with Myron and Myron doesn't do every project with Bray. There are other architects that we work with as well. But, uh, in this case here, you know, it's just a good fit and, you know, we have an interest in exploring this together. But, but I, I, that's, you know, again, it has not been an issue between our two firms. We've got, we've had a great relationship over the years. And, uh, I can, I can, I always say in districts, I can never guarantee that I'm going to pass your referendum. Because if I could guarantee that every referendum was going to pass, I'd spend more time in Vegas than I would here in Wisconsin. But I think I could safely say here, I can guarantee you that our two firms would work well together throughout this whole process. And we won't, we wouldn't have to worry about that ever becoming a problem here because again, we've been doing it for such a long time. But that is a great question. Other questions? Yep.
Being that there's two companies, what kind of a percentage is the cost for your companies versus the building project?
So I, I don't have that proposal in front of us, but it's, it's the same percentages as we originally submitted in a proposal to Jordan. So I don't have those.
Yeah, actually I do have it, but it's a, I mean, it's a range depending on the dollar value, but it's in the range.
Yeah, I understand you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's two separate percentages. Ours are going to be in a range depending the bigger the project, the lower the percentage. Does that make sense? So smaller the project, the bigger the percentage. So ours have ranged from what, Craig?
So for example, like, well, let's assume it's greater than twenty million right now, just with the numbers. So that, for example, Bray's fee was going to be five point two five percent and Myron's is going to be one point seven five percent. So those are the fees that we would carry. That would be part of our contractual relationship, you know, with the district.
So that's seven percent for construction management, architectural, but ours is architectural, interior design, engineering. So civil, structural, plumbing, fire protection, HVAC, electrical. So all of that, low voltage, technology, fire alarm systems, that's all included in our architectural five point two five percent fee.
But the numbers that we were showing you tonight, again, had all those costs in there. So we're not, you're not putting these dollars on top of what we shared tonight. That's all, all the CM fees and architectural fees and all that stuff is all part of that project school.
There's ways, some firms, and I don't, I don't know anything about the other firm you're talking to, quite frankly, so I don't know if this is the way they do it. There's some firms that don't do full engineering. So they'll do, that's a camera. Some firms will do the design. I want to get my good side.
She's with the other firm.
Uh, some firms will do what's called design, build, engineering, where they only do, let's say a thirty or forty percent scope document. So they do single lines instead of full ductwork. They don't do the calculations and then they go out to the market and bid using that. So we can probably reduce our fee twenty percent-ish of our, our five and a quarter if we go that route. Um, but I don't, we don't think you get as good quality. You don't get the, the competitive market to determine what your actual cost, for example, would be. So there's ways to skinny those dollars down. Uh, but again, that's a good decision we have to make together, not one we would make going into a project, assuming you want to use that delivery model.
So if you guys got to work on the construction and you're in the middle of it and contractors realize the architect drew something up that really does not make sense and does not physically work onsite. Is that considered a change order then that would be passed along to the district? Or is that something that you guys would have to eat because he missed something or something didn't work in the logistics department?
So part of that relationship is we always try to work through that process between us and the architect first. So that's always our first option is we'll look at that and then, there might be a certain detail that's, that's set up one way. But once we get into the construction process, we say, you know, I think there's a, we think there's a better way to do that. So if we can just figure that out and then we'll just, we'll just make that change. And quite honestly, you know, it, it, everything will be fine because it's just, it's just changing a detail and, um, it's still creating the same solution. It's just a, maybe it's a more economical way to do it or whatever the case may be. So we will always do that first before we want to get into any type of a change order discussion. So I think there's a lot of that that happens during the, that construction process. I mean, we try to figure that a lot of, a lot of that out in the design process. So we don't have to worry about that. But again, there's always just unremains that you're not prepared for. So we'll work through that and work together to try to figure that out without, without the district incurring any additional costs. You know, the big, the big changes really should be, like Matt talked about, if it's an outlet or, or you decide that you know, we feel like we just need another classroom as part of that addition. So we need to add another nine hundred square feet to the, to the scope. Well, if you're going to start adding square footage, you know, we can't make that up. And that just, that's a, that's a function of, you know, we can put a value on that and the district has to make the decision if they want to do that or not. But a lot of the miscellaneous stuff, a lot of those, we just work through that during the construction process.
Yeah, we have onsite construction personnel as well. So every other week typically, we're going to have one of our onsite construction team members out onsite. Two reasons. One, making checking on progress, making sure that Myron's and subs are building the building for plans and specs. They don't just get to do whatever they want. We're going to hold them to the requirements of the plan and specs. But also, so to be proactive, to work with their onsite superintendent and predict what's in the next week, what's in the next two weeks. Uh, to, to, to run through that scope and make sure that there's a level of comfort and accuracy with what needs to happen. So that helps as well. I had some of those things off beforehand.
Any other questions? If not, I just want to thank you guys for all the work and the collaboration conversations that we've had the last three or four months. Um, appreciate that. It's definitely been a great learning experience for me as well. So I feel more knowledgeable. Um, so that's, that's a good thing. Uh, obviously we talked about kind of timeline and what lies ahead. You can plan a year for me tomorrow and we'll go from there. So, so we appreciate your expertise. So thank you.
Yeah. No high school, kid, high school kids cannot be in the.
No.
Can't drive. Mommy, where do you put all the parking vehicles?
It's a lot of cars.
Ready to pull back. And you're taking us to the night. And you know, you put what I'm teaching. Like that's the part of the year.
Taking out.
Here, there's section where they are presenting, take off all the staff in the parking. The other performance services, they were. My concrete right here, that's where they. So you're not taking any of the. I added. It's my marketing expense. It's what are we doing? Where are you going to go with this?
Yeah.
I feel like some of them are older, you know, new lease specialty. So I get that. Yeah. But I am. I come to a little all day and I'm in the wreck. What are we adding? Auditoriums.
Yeah, what's the question?
Where are you going to put those people?
There you go, that's the next project.
We will further this discussion to executive session. But do you guys have any other questions or anything, or do you have any questions for the people?
Um, well, I have a question, just since there's still people, because I think it's an important thing. Do you know in the pricing for performance services, do they include the money for the, like, the playground and the furniture?
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, they, they thought they did in their first presentation, but.
I can't remember.
They did have a playground, but I know they did say the furniture.
The instructions were all in.
Okay, that was what I just wanted to verify.
That was the next question.
Pennies and pennies, you know.
I think it's, in my mind, I'm glad he made reference to minimal scope and the alternative because I think conceptually, we haven't really been engaged in the conversations with the staff and we haven't heard from, you know, so I guess, I mean, we can see here all day an add and subtract and we haven't talked to the community, so, you know, there's a lot there that I think will come through the next phases to be determined.
Do you guys have any questions with these guys while they're still here? Cause they don't have the interview.
No, they can be.
Okay.
Look deeply at you.
I am. She loves construction.
And to get back to our agenda and we go to the next one, it's the insurance committee. Looks like Gary's the chair, do you have?
Yeah, there's nothing I have.
Okay, for policy, that's me. And you'll just update the policy if we go, we need to, I don't think we've got anything. And then we have Barb for public relations.
I mean, I think it's insignificant right now, but whether it's in this or the curriculum to kind of revisit Rachel's technology survey that went out and the whole kind of one-to-one timeline scheme and everything, I kind of, so, where that falls, no rush either, but.
Yep.
On the horizon.
Yeah, just a couple of quick notes. I'll go into the kind of committee structure and some upcoming things that I, you know, I think everyone's had this in the both, but that I can see, something you can talk about sooner than later as well. So, if you remember, a half discussion on student fees and exploring those a bit deeper and making decisions whether or not we'll do that practice as it has been historically. That's probably a March or April discussion at the latest because we're starting to talk logically seriously next year. Employee relations, we already mentioned the utilization of forecast five to look at market comps. That's probably a March conversation because contracts need to be dealt by May fifteenth. Tied to that to a certain extent is insurance as well, research on insurance. And we've talked about possibilities for keeping pocket expenses the same for our staff, but exploring possibilities for like a high deductible HSA or something else because there's potential statements for the school district and for the employees. So, I don't wanna overwhelm anyone right now, but I'll just preface, I think March will probably have four-ish items to have in our committee discussions where we'll have information presentations and then dialogue in this setting to kind of push that forward because the timeline we're on to make these decisions is concurrently pretty quick as well. So, I just wanted to foreshadow those items.
But we won't have an hour and thirty minutes left until we go.
No, I mean, I think to me the thought of like mentally preparing ourselves for about half an hour per topic, if we have four of those types of discussions, that's kind of what that could look like.
I think it's doable.
Those are very important things that we, if we're gonna pick them up and actually do something about this year, time's coming.
Sounds good. Sounds like you have anything else? Okay, with that moving on to item number seven, future meeting important dates. Anybody have anything they'd want to add for that? Okay, with that, moving on to, I think there'll be a question. He ought to read all this. So, the motion to end understanding that when we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin, the state statute one, parent e liberating or negotiating or purchasing public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business in the executive session.
So, that motion is on here.
So, one thing that actually made the development sessions that was before that was we should have a roll call as we go to executive session. If she was offered at the seminar this year.
Okay.
So, we just wanna take a roll call to adjourn to executive session.
So, the roll call takes place of the motion to adjourn?
It does, that the roll call takes the place of.
So, all you have to do is say clerk, please take a roll. Mike Wagner, it's anybody to you. Here, Gary Demasch, James Cartman, Mary Vishal.
Yes, or is that then the roll calls just to happen when we get to there?
No, but just to adjourn.
Then there's no adjournment, so God, it takes place.
Just to get into exactly.
Oh, my goodness.